Just so everybody knows who we are, I'm Al Ahat, I'm the chairman of the planning board, and other members, introduce themselves please.
Roy H. Aldash.
David Mepels.
Skip Oppenheimer.
Sue Zacharice.
Right, we've given this, let's see what time is it? Yeah, we've given this about half an hour, and if you could just explain to us what you're planning to do, that would be very helpful.
Absolutely. My name is JP Fine, I'm co-chair of the facilities committee at Meadowbrook. This is our team, Skip Burke, our landscape architect, by the way, I feel very lucky to be down on this day in history, Anna Marcello from OMR, architectural firm, we got Rob German back here, our civil engineer, and Zorrie Zimmerman, who's our project manager.
And Bill from The Othrach.
Yes, sorry. So, you've got all of us here tonight, hopefully we can have a dialogue about some of the stuff that we presented last time in front of you, and that has been distributed recently. I can give you a brief overview of the master plan, and what we've presented previously, or you can go right into questions and comments, or however you guys want us to do it.
I'll review.
We have to give you an overview. So, over the past eighteen months, the board trustees have been working with students, faculty, parents, develop a long-term master plan for the campus at Meadowbrook. It's a relatively good process for us, and something that we felt was very important to do, we thought it was in everybody's best interest to lay out what our long-term plans were for the campus, and what you see here tonight is the culmination of that work. It might actually, it's almost been two years now since we've had work on it. It was done in conjunction with a strategic plan, which really drove the direction of where our programs for the school were going, and then put back into what we would need to do that. The overall goal, I think, for the master plan is to improve our facilities and landscape in an effective manner, to effectively catch up with the really amazing existing education programs that we have. We want to maintain a deliberately small and intimate field in campus. The goal is not to expand the student body. We've asked our designers to design for the existing number of students, and nothing more. You know, one of our major goals is to improve the efficiency and quality of the campus without significantly expanding the footprint of our buildings, just so that we've made a conscious effort not to spread our campus out, but to focus on, you'll see from what our initial plans are, to focus on the center of the campus, and replacing older facilities that don't really work for us anymore. Safety was paramount. You'll see that the campus, there's a lot of thought, mostly from our amazing landscape architect, to interconnect our buildings, and to create safe passageways and walkways, to make clear walkways and connection between our different facilities. Basically, one of our major goals was to make the most of our campus as natural environment, to work with the landscape, not against it, to design, to design sustainably as best we could, you know, essentially to bring the meadow and the park back in the meadow work. And so, a lot of our plan is geared towards outdoor learning and embracing natural elements of the campus. And we asked our architects to design within the town zoning bylaws, within the height limitations, and the bylaws of the town of Weston. And I think that's about it. And we've, the plans are well in progress. We've gone as far as to start focusing on the phase one of the plan, and we've actually got schematic designs for that, and hopefully we'll be doing that thing in the near future to the board. And I'm happy to explain more about how we got to this master plan. I can also talk about particular elements of it, or the experts I have here can probably answer several of their questions better than I can, or I know they can. But the gist of it is, we wanted to think about the campus on a very long-term, ten to fifteen year, and really focus on what we have, and make it as good as we possibly can be.
Okay, thank you. Is that it? Is anybody still speaking?
Well, that's a broad overview, and all of that. I took you all through the boards last time, and the package has a lot of more detailed information about the process, and how we got to what we think is the ideal situation for our master plan. We'd be happy to answer any questions and take comments.
Well, you've got to remember, we're not getting any younger, and the last time you were here was like eight, I think, seven or eight months ago.
Yes.
So, rather than relying on our phenomenal memories, maybe it would be helpful to go over again what it is you're planning to do.
Absolutely. The main program elements that we're looking to enhance revolve around the learning center initially, and the lower schools, which is right here in the center of the campus. Our bustling program, our steam and step programs are underserved as far as facilities, space. There are a lot of elements of the campus that are, I guess I could call them functionally obsolescent, and lack connection between other areas of the campus. There are certain areas on the third floor of the McDowell building, which the students lovingly call the Guam, because it's so hard to get to, and it's actually a really wonderful space. So, part of what our, through studying the entire campus and understanding what our needs were, we decided initially that we would like to focus on connecting this three-level facility on multiple levels, and in doing so, focusing on a footprint that was an older building, that really just didn't serve our programs very well, and maximize that footprint, as opposed to, right now it's one story in areas, two stories, and it doesn't really connect to the other buildings very well.
It might be helpful to show them what's existing now.
Yeah, absolutely. Is that on my mind? Sorry.
Do you want to do this part?
Yeah. And you might walk up to it.
And just to get you oriented a little bit, this is the main academic building now, which includes, this is the, an existing building, footprint underneath, this is the proposed one, obviously, but there is an existing building here now. This is the oldest piece of the school, and this is the new McDowell Center that was built in nineteen ninety. And then, there's two existing gyms, the Greater Gym and the Benick Gym, and the idea is really to take down this whole centerpiece that's a two-story academic building, and replace it with a three-story academic building. So, really trying to accommodate the growth within the footprint that we're already occupying. There's a very small expansion of the footprint, just a few feet back in this direction. And then, the other main piece of it is really about making connections.
So, tell Debbie G., sorry.
How's it going?
She's the neighbor. Sorry.
It's about making connections between the various buildings, because right now the students go outside, you know, and this is junior kindergarten through eighth grade school, you know, so all of those safety issues are paramount. And then also making safe landscape connections between here and the fields, between here and the upper fields here, and then all the way around to the fields that are on top of the hill here. And these are future projects, which would be potentially replaced, and there's a house, I don't know if you're familiar with it, there's a decked house there, with potentially a, you know, better facilities building, and then possibly a future building site over here. But the main phase one, that as JP said, we're working on, is this piece right here that's a new lower school and a learning center.
The idea, and we kept going back to, was improving connection within our existing campus, and to initially focus on the center of our campus, and work our way out as far as, I think Skip Burke can probably speak to it much better than I can, but the spine that creates a more intimate field in the campus, and a clear pathway from one end of it to the other, really resonated with our committee. Right now, a lot of the buildings and structures were built as needs just appeared, they were knee-jerk reactions, and let's put a building here, or stand here. I think we've really done a thorough job of thinking about it internally, and trying to make better connections and better use of what we have, as opposed to creating new space. Some of these items you see on here, because we're trying to think about the campus as a whole in a long-term plan, like the performing arts center potentially, truthfully, that's something that would not be anywhere near on priority list or up front, simply can't afford it, but we wanted to put it on there because that's as a near partner of somewhere that we potentially use. But we're really focused on the center of the campus and connecting the things.
As JP was describing, the campus, when we started, was sort of a prestige, adjacent projects that didn't have a very strong relationship with each other, and so, our first move was to create this pedestrian spine that would really unite all the program on the campus, from, you know, the upper meadow, and the baseball field, drop-off, academic center, parking, where you had a lot of circulation coming from, and then ultimately to the upper field as well, and not just think of it as a utilitarian kind of connection, but also a symbolic one, and so we have, you know, small shaped structures at either end, so that, you know, when you're on it, you can see destinations up the hill here, and get a sense of the totality of the campus. At the same time, we proposed, you know, this is maybe even more popular than this, because right now people walk like that to get to a car, if they're coming from the back there, this creates a really, that proposed path and bridge or the stream is pretty sort of direct, and I would think very beautiful connection as well. That is contrasted and countered with a much more curvilinear path, which we call our science walk, and this started with our horticulturalists that we had out here did a rather large report on the different plant associations we had here, and then really interpreted it as a learning document for students, you know, what kinds of, you know, foods or building materials or canoe-making materials, you know, did all the different vegetation afford to Native Americans, and kind of different stations of those planting associations are diagrammed here. And so, you've got the really strong connecting spine here, and then this one, which is really interpretive of the idea of the campus as a classroom, and then sort of feeding on that is the idea, and this is rather typical, when you have landscapes like this, and you create disturbance in them for a new building, usually you're taking out the indigenous natural material and replacing it with stuff you got from a nursery center, and it kind of looks like this diagram here. And so, this is all the introduced material, just as a result of the construction process that bears no relationship to that. And so, part of this whole idea of interpreting the campus is to, as we go through different phases here, start to remediate this, and look to the indigenous plant associations for our plant materials, that we will replace the foreign material with. We might reserve that for special function gardens, and symbolic gardens, and more kind of contained courtyards, you know, but for the general landscape, we want to create the same kind of continuity in the landscape that we're describing with the connectiveness strategies. The only other really key things to mention is, it's been mentioned that the school is not looking to grow, it's currently underparked, and so, there's approximately 150 spaces on campus right now, and so, we're looking at approximately 50 more at different phases, none of which are this first phase here, but maybe roughly 25 or so there, and 25 here as well, to get us up closer to 200, as opposed to the 150. Those are the key points of landscape.
So, you're going to replace just about every plant that Paul Baker put in?
Yeah, I'm going to get in trouble with some people.
Great.
Which people? Even the headmaster has his plants out there.
This is a phased land over time, and I think Skip's done a great job thinking about it from a sustainability standpoint, less water, less heat, you know, less strain on the environment, create an educational tool via it, and to not reduce some of the screening, but use different materials that are more appropriate with the indigenous landscape.
Yeah, you mentioned in your master plan draft here, employing sustainable strategies throughout, and you said less water, we'd be setting up a rainwater system, so that the water can be recycled, but, I mean, if you're building new stuff, then you can build that in, it saves you a whole bunch ultimately. Or, what are, I mean, do you have specific sustainable strategies that you're thinking about?
Well, in addition to, you know, what we mentioned about with the plant associations, at least on the outside, we'll be looking to construct rain gardens adjacent to the building, and in the same kind of educational manner as these paths, we want to do that in a very intellectual manner as well. And so, we're doing them right up against the building, typically close to doors, and so, when it rains, you'll see the dynamic of water going into these gardens, then flooding to hold that water, and release it slowly through infiltration. Rob will be taking care of overflow, drain elements if we need those.
We're looking also, David, at things like, you know, where there are hardscape elements such as sidewalks and things, using porous paving blocks and things to get the water back in, so that on more of a large-scale basis, we'll introduce some environmentally friendly elements. And I know, even in the building design process, which OMR can speak to, they're looking at mechanical systems that are sustainable, whether it be potentially adding solar elements or geothermal elements. So, you know, kind of everything is on the table at this point in the master plan, and as they, you know, as they try to put things together, so.
How about the previous paper, the system that you were so positive about a few years ago, are you still positive about that?
Yeah, we've used it, actually had a few applications in Weston that are very positive, and we've also come up with some more creative ways to introduce basically porous systems that don't have porous asphalt, like Brooks's house. We actually have a porous driveway, but the surface itself is traditional asphalt, but it's built on a three-foot stone bed, and we pitched the driveway off into stone edging on the side, so the water goes off the side of the driveway and then gets underneath it, so, yeah, I still am pretty high on porous applications, and, you know, try to apply them creatively where it's appropriate.
If I can add something, I think in terms of sustainability, one thing that JP referred to that I think should be, it's a key part of what sustainable really means, is that keeping a compact building as opposed to building another one is the most sustainable we can do, as opposed to having now two buildings, we have one building that's more compact, and that is a really sustainable strategy.
We're going to try.
It's part of, it was our existing, it's a much more efficient thing.
Well, are you going to incorporate sustainability in my curriculum?
Absolutely, yeah.
Right place to work.
Yeah, right after, yeah, building systems, the dashboards, and all sorts of things.
It is to make all the systems, it's a part of the garden, it's a landscape, it's considered that the systems have a product that can be demonstrated as well.
Since you are certainly 33% more parking spaces, more long-term builds, and it's really sustainable, with the beginning successes in my respect.
Absolutely. The parking is driven by existing underserved, so it's not adding more vehicles, where at K-38 School, students don't drive, the faculty, we're very underserved. Really, the major need is when we have assemblies, all schools have new stuff, currently we have a police officer there every time we have an assembly, and we have to park in the fire lane and other places, which is unfortunately was filled, which is very underserved.
But even in terms of like adding parking, you know, there are sustainable elements that we could consider.
Absolutely.
For instance, putting in charging stations for electric vehicles and things like that, which, again, that's a great thing to introduce to the students.
Absolutely.
And one, the last thing I want to say, is this board almost always particularly requires, you know, outside lighting and dark sky compliant, to be safe with lighting and dark sky, so keep that in mind when you're thinking about when you get down the road.
Absolutely.
Can I ask questions or comments?
I have a question. At the intersection of Farm Road, there's an existing house that was built in, I think, the 1950s, I don't see it on the plan.
Yeah, it's right here, but.
Let me start to describe that.
My concern is that that building, I believe, was written up by the historical society as a significant 1950s modernist building.
I think that's information that's actually happened while we've been in process. It's actually located, I think, in our wetlands, and it's got a subject that can't be ever replaced, so it's a little bit of a conundrum, and safe for us right now, because that issue has arisen, but in terms of actually being able to use it, it's pretty challenging.
And we, you know, certainly explore whatever we can do to accommodate, but, you know, it was our intention to create some more open space.
So, the proposal is to knock it down?
Yes.
What's your timetable?
For knocking down.
For phase one?
Oh, phase one. We have schematic design plans, we'd like to present those as soon as you'll hear them, see them. It's, you know, very focused on this section of the campus. It's, we'd like to push up on it around in June of 2016, so backing into that, we have some time, but we'd like to get moving on it as soon as we can. We've been raising funds in the design building, and we're very excited about it, so we're going to get it in front of you guys as soon as we can.
Well, it's either scheduled before July, or it's sometime in September, so.
Even if it's September, I think that still allows the June timetable to be met, and, you know, and from the site perspective, it's really, it's taking down a building and putting one in the same place as where there is one, you know, it's not like virgin ground.
The existing sidewalks change a little bit, but it's not, we're actually, it's a very small footprint change.
So, the only part of phase one that you'd be bringing into us is what's in purple on that drawing?
Correct, and the landscape, it's right there.
Yeah, okay.
I was just reading your color letter, and the number one, I thought it was laudable that you did mention our goal is to avoid surprises in the future, and to rebuild the relationship and trust between the planning board and Meadowbrook, and I appreciate you saying that. And I'm also very interested, and I know you had a meeting with the neighbors, and the neighbors have had trouble with the school over the years, mostly due to the parking and traffic, I've decided, as well as other things that have happened. But that meeting, you said you learned a lot from it, and it was very valuable feedback. Could you sort of recap?
It was, and I think we learned, we learned that communicating with our neighbors is very important, and having a plan like this is very helpful, because I think it put a lot of their minds at ease. I think a lot of them were concerned with additional.
It had been bad history.
Yes, absolutely.
Lots of surprises to them.
I think they were relieved to hear that we're not adding another grade, or have enrollment increase planned, that we were focused where we are focused, and not, you know, spreading the footprint of the school. I think that they were, they expressed some very valid concerns, and we hope that we've addressed them. I think they'll tell you, I hope they will, that we've been very straightforward with them, and have kept them involved. I hear from the neighbors on Autumn Road quite a bit, one of the things that, you know, they're concerned about was a right turnout of that, this entrance here, which exists today, and we put up a sign, and we've been really, we communicated to the parents every year.
Don't do it.
Don't do it.
But they do it.
Right, and so, we've, I speak with Ann Margulies quite a bit, who lives on this road, and she's been very appreciative that it's been working. I think that we're hopefully heading in the right direction with our neighbors. I was very.
Well, that's good, and I'm glad you're talking with me, because that was a huge problem. And I can't find, but I thought I read something, while you're not increasing the enrollment for the regular school year, that there was a possibility of trying to increase enrollment for summer camps. Is that so? I mean, I can't find where that's in.
No, no, that's not, that's not it. Enrollment for camp is actually greater than school.
Right.
That's the way it has.
So, you're not going to increase that?
But no, that is not.
Because I think traffic in the summer is very difficult in the summer camp, and I know you do your best with police details and everything else, but I was wondering.
Summer Camp Enrollment Act is actually limited by the capacity of the subjects.
Oh, good, that's good to hear.
And I think what you're referring to is, it says space for growing summer camp activities and programs.
Yes, that's it, that's it.
And I think it's that they're constantly adding more activities.
Right, but not more kids.
Yeah.
Okay. Our goal is really to serve our existing program.
And the community, which is very.
Yeah, I mean, it's, there are some of us that can remember when that whole neighborhood, it's the whole corner at Summer Street and Farm Road, that was all like a little neighborhood, and little houses along there.
Yeah, a little homes.
Couple of, one pretty nice 19th century house came down about several years ago, maybe a little longer, but it's, you know, one of the reasons why the neighbors are, you know, sort of touchy, is that the houses keep disappearing, you know, what was a neighborhood is now essentially institutional. And so, here's another one on Farm Road, the last one, which is going to disappear and get taken over by the school.
We'll have to change the name of the road.
Yeah.
It's not a farm road.
No longer farm, but I mean, one by one, they seem to go, and that's just, you know, that's just an expression of several factors. One is the fact that the school was always landlocked. When it first started, it was meant to actually integrate with its neighbors, you know, it was going to be an organic interaction, but now it seems, you know, it's almost become a completely institutional campus, and that's just how it's progressed, yeah.
I just have a question. So, Meadowbrook School started there in 1926, is that right?
Built in the 1920s.
The houses, the neighborhood didn't crop up until the 1950s.
Yeah, 23.
Oh, no, they're 19th century houses.
They were early houses there, yeah. But a lot of the neighborhood is, was, a lot of what happened in that area happened in the 50s and 60s, and so it's kind of returning.
A long Meadowbrook Road, though, is not the case.
Well, Meadowbrook Road was created in 1928, 29, so this was before that, this school.
But Meadowbrook, this was supposed to integrate with that neighborhood, I mean, that was the whole idea.
Yeah, but I'm just saying, you're talking about removing a 1950s home, is that?
Yeah.
Yes, it's a, I don't know if that was the school. And it's a home that the school has put some money into over the years, and it really has weighed, it's lived past. And it really has, way, it's lived past a useful life. It's a cinder block house that is entirely of a lot of money, but there's not really the land or the systems to support it.
What about the house on the corner, which has farm in summer? It's my last rumor.
Yes, well, we have no intentions of purchasing that home, but I think that neighbor is very happy there. I think he showed up at our meeting and was-
Yeah, no, he's, he's fine.
So I want to echo what Sue said about, you know, glad to see there's a different tact. And that there's outreach and transparency, well, some transparency anyway, and outreach and communication. And bringing, you know, people into the process early is a lot less scary for people, especially after they feel that they've burned before. So rebuilding the relationship is, I think, critical for you guys. And I think it's admirable that you're attempting that. I wish you success. It's not easy. It's much, much harder to rebuild trust after it's lost than maintaining it.
And we have some neighbors that haven't forgotten yet, and they're, I'm sure they won't so-
I'm sure they'll be faithful with us.
I'm hoping they don't. I'm hoping it's all positive when it gets to you finally, because hopefully they're seeing it.
Well, I hope they can repay that to us.
Good. Well, thank you very much for telling us what you have in mind. Are you with the school or are you a neighbor?
I'm actually the project manager.
Oh.
Part of the team.
Just wanted to be sure, if you were a neighbor and had anything to say, that you had a chance to do it.
She's in charge and yelling at us so we're not getting mixed up.
Okay.
Yeah, if you haven't signed in, we're just-
Thank you.
Thank you.
If you give me a clause, I would leave you here. I don't know, we used to have something, it disappeared.
Thanks, you all.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.